Okay.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Development and Industrial Commission to Order, Monday, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, it's seven ten P M. This meeting will be via Zoom, the ID eight six three six three oh one three zero zero six, passcode three zero one 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 one. Those of you who are trying to get on by phone, one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. We all stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in the nation under the principle of liberty, justice, and freedom of speech.
I voted last week to add the position of representative from the Crystal County Agricultural Place, I'd like to introduce their designated representative, a voting member of this board who was approved by the Board of Selectmen, Lauren Powell. Lauren is the IT Director of Crystal Aggie. I don't know if Lauren is prepared to try to help the Aggie school, but if you could give a little bit of background about yourself, I would appreciate it.
I've been at the Aggie school probably over a year and a half. I took over the position of manager past their time. Been in education for over twenty years. My family, my dad's side of it, my family is all from Dayton. He was a teacher at the high school for forty years. My, he told them I was raised in Dayton, so I have a very strong connect with his community. So I was really excited to be at the Aggie because they love down the street from it. So I always wanted my teachers in high school. So, you know, I feel like I'm kind of coming home, coming home safe as well.
I think one of the things that I would agree with the members. Tom?
I've been in the local for thirty years, around about the town, surrounding our community. I used to be on the Investor Development Committee, not that long.
Dan Higgins, in Apple Hill, also a member of this commission for fifteen years.
Oh, good morning, Mr. Mullin, I'm a administrator. Only been working for it seems like years, but it's been only since beginning. I think we have a lot of exciting.
Tom Barkley, retired firefighter from Sun Ste. Former member, a member, past member of this one, is active in this industrial commission. Currently the chairman of the C P C and also on open space. And I like to honor Chairman of the Town and welcome aboard.
In regards to the role of Crystal Aggie School, Dayton is a white apartment. One of the things there is a need is to preserve that integrity, to preserve that history, heritage of that tradition itself, of that farm. Going along with that plan is what we're doing. Farmers own, farmers are reaching a point in their life where they want farm. Working with farms to determine what's going to happen to that block. Because that will have an impact on, you know, obviously the home supply of students with that. But there are many different options out. And I'm not sure every landowner is aware of all the options. C P C, we have, so we have the need to be employee defined. Conservation Commission also got certain pieces of land. Reaching out to them and helping them decide whether they want to deal with the land situation of assignment. You know, I think about, not in the case of farm land, but I think of the case of a piece of property that's right next to the library, close next to the library. And by the time Mike had the opportunity to talk to that family, they only had a purchase and sale. Might have been something, and that may have qualified for C P C purchase or other ways for the town to pay. By joining that house and that land, which might have been a great place for an addition to the library. So those are opportunities that we can't waste. You know, I'll give an example, this piece of land across the street from me, there's a hundred acres of land there. What's going to happen to that? Is it going to remain open space? Is it going to be farm? Is it going to be a gravel pit? Is it going to be a development? Absolutely, okay. So can, can we help? One, if it's going to be a development, we have to, if we can help influence what type of development it's going to be, because the forty B card is getting stronger. The legislation for the House right now, it will do the developments even more power. Make it very difficult for towns to fuck them. Is it going to be a development? What impact is it going to have on our school system, schools already overcrowded? So maybe we can help mitigate that. Maybe we can convince the landowner, might be good for solar water or other types of. So. The other piece that Lawrence brought spoke to me about is that the agricultural school is involved in a lot of grades. And also extension service that may help existing farmers. And may also help us get some money. Example of another project, and is saving the public access in those discussions, but another really. But there is a proposal that's out there for the addition of a marijuana field or a marijuana farm on the Quinn Street. How that's going to go, you know, right now to early stages. That's where our relationship, especially with planning board, is going to be very important. Or is that something we may decide based on discussions in the planning board that we may want to just avoid being a part of?
And in that case, I would definitely suggest that we, as the commission, do not anticipate that because outdoor farming is a serious risk. We should, we should really got set on the planning board, the planning board has done quite a bit of all of that and will continue to do that. I'm a little forced, I would just text him, I just got past it, so I'm negative, okay? I just want to make sure, I'm going to.
I can test this. Right now, we're not talking specifics, these are ideas or things that, you know, just, we're just talking right now from the farming agriculture. There are going to be many, many other areas that are going to come up as time goes on. Mr. Mullin, could you speak a bit on Jonathan?
Yes, so.
Is it Daggan?
Jigget.
Jigget?
I believe Jigget. I believe, so Jonathan, what I understand, he was born and raised in Daggan. Graduated, graduated from the, and has been involved with the Department of Agriculture for quite some time now. And is actually, I believe, the Chamber's Ambassador to the town of Daggan. And so he's, he attended the, the Fire Factory Festival back in July with Sylvia, the president of the Chamber. He's been really involved since I actually brought him in town. He, oh, you know, like I talked about a bunch of things, how he wants really to, he wants, we are either Chamber or he can engage with local businesses and he wants to help the Chamber make sure that our local businesses in town have a voice as well. So I've been thinking about the Chamber's involvement, you know, and also one of the things we wrote for the Chamber on, at the end of May, beginning of June, is identified for a grant that we actually found out last week, last week, last week that we would not have awarded. It's, but, but I think really relates to the focus and the future goals of the committee. The grant application would have helped us actually complete the zoning analysis on the roofs, one thirty-eight, and out forty, forty-four hours looking at the kind of zoning. Are you trying to envision what really could be and what could fit, and what really wouldn't fit? Well, one thirty, I'll email up on forty-four, and the Chamber would have been really helpful in inviting out to Jonathan and to Sylvia, really trying to support that, so we could start our picks. But I do think in terms of the economic, in terms of the economic development plan, you know, I worked with Seth and through an allegory that we're planning to talk about in a few moments. I'm excited really for the Chamber with that, you know, hopefully continue letting them help us. I'll wait beyond.
I just want to make one point. Yes, and it might be obvious who watched this special meeting or who did not get to come in the first time, but both Warren, Matty, and Arthur, when you go to remember?
Yes.
They're not advisory, they're not here on a temporary basis, they're permanent.
Yes.
Um, very shortly, I am going to return to my role as layers on. Currently, this committee will have two layers, because it is our intention to not only work within the town, but to work with partners, like certain, the Chamber of Commerce and the Crystal Aggie. Mr. Mullin will have to be elected chairman and secretary, will give the presentation of certain. It's, the gentleman was not able to make it for tonight. So our next meeting, he will be coming, you know, for a detailed presentation. Mike will be talking about certain and a grant that he is working on. At the last meeting, we said we'd wait to elect the offices until this week. We currently have the need for a clerk. Is there anyone who is interested in serving in that position? Or if I have any complications?
Does anybody could get the inner clerk, because I, can we discuss it?
Yeah.
I've been a clerk on a number of town administrator selection committee, I've been the clerk, former clerk from this one, was active. I'm not the greatest of clerks, because as far as trying to take notes. So I just like to, if someone has the talent for it, you'd like to do it. It seems like I always did, I know Joe won't be a clerk.
He can absolutely.
But I've always been cast in that role, and I'm just being honest with you.
I, I don't mind doing it because I have additional resources available. Because our needs are important, that gives me an advantage, so not a problem.
I will vote for you right now.
I don't know, can I be your official clerk or can I be?
It sounds like you do not have a clerk, but you're going to use them as.
Right.
Yeah, I like that explanation so thick. The committee doesn't have a clerk per se, but it's understood. Ah, that's like the college of the union, we all, we'll take a minute and present the minutes. Oh, not having a clerk name only, I don't think it's a issue.
We are going to be bringing partners in to help us with resources, and that will be my responsibility, like, will it speak more about that with the grants that is reaching out? One of the things that I hope that this board will do is bringing people to make presentations, not only from, you know, the local interest developers. You know, one of the things that I heard during the campaign by my opponents was the idea, and it's good, of working with agencies and developers about our forty B requirements. We, we can't get away from that. And if we can get ahead of that and maybe recruit potential forty B projects, whether it be seeds, whether it be any kind, like co-op, we have two, four, we have six homes in Dayton of individuals that have disabilities, some physical, some emotional, and they help us meet our forty B requirement.
Better. I don't think that there is a way ever fill in those requirements, because if twenty percent of every forty we come set.
Keep increasing, you have to go.
It just, it just keeps on going up, and there's no way to get around it. But there are existing homes in the town that I don't, I do not, still to this day, and I have some homes that I own in Dayton that are not, they are not qualified for the thing, but yet I have section eights and all of that living there, but they're not qualified. And I can't for the life of me understand that, how that works. I've tried to call, either I'm just ignorant of the cell, or I just do not understand, I cannot figure it out.
So just as a quick aside, my understanding is that the section, like any section eight, any section eight requirement, our, our opportunities are tense, they wouldn't actually qualify because the forty B requirement, or the forty B designation, the low income, or the forty B designation is actually, is actually like it's connected with the deed of the property. And there's nothing, for example, for your renter, I could, I could rent to, for that, for that section eight requirement to stay with the property, you would say. And I think that's where the lack of our section eight processes are not being quantifiable in forty B, from my understanding. So it's got to make sense, because a property, like a property is not, oh, you know, determined technically.
The property.
It's not, it's not in the deed. So because when a, when a forty B property, when it gets put up, when it's put up for sale or anything else, it's listed and it's listed for sale, with an affordable housing requirement. So, for example, if you bought a house, oh, you know, oh, you know, in any, in any neighborhood here that was built under a forty B requirement, and you have a property, oh, you know, that we, was used to get to the threshold in that property. And if, if you go to sell that property, you're limited, oh, you know, by what the, there's a term, it's, I can't find it. I can't find it, such a thing, but oh, oh, A M I, the average median requirement. Oh, so you can only, you can only sell that property for, oh, I got, I got to a certain threshold. You can't go what, oh, you know, is actually driving the market. Oh, so that, oh, just connected to the deed of the property and the whole, so that's, that's one of the reasons.
That whoever thought of this must have really, really done some homework, because that means that it will never, I mean, ever. And every time you add eighty percent of forty Bs, twenty percent of those qualify, but it's just never going to make it, you know? And, and so I thought it was all based on the low income. Affordable housing is what I thought it, it, it should, if the definition is that, then section eights and all of that should be included into that.
So I believe, but I kind of want to say the devil isn't in the details of the definition, but the definition of what I'll quantify, it's like it's, I believe, and I haven't read them in a long time, but the reds actually simply are, are owner occupied, are you occupied, are you type of requirement? Oh, that stays with the deed, for the property that's given to a particular property.
So basically, it's calling that twenty percent of the forty Bs that actually qualify for that, for that. No existing home that was not built as a forty B does not qualify by animal owner forty.
Yeah, only the twenty percent in a, in terms of the more broader neighborhood, but because if twenty percent in that neighborhood, the whole neighborhood is being, is able to be counted for the purposes of the forty B, at my understanding, yeah.
My suggestion on stakeholders to the agenda is that once we have the gentleman from C P C, and I don't know if he could help us with this, or if Pat, Pat's office can help us. That we have put forty B on the agenda, bring in a couple people that have a really good learning. And discussion.
Very good, I, I, I would like that, because not only for my own, but for the forty B.
Yeah, so they probably reach an intersection with that, but I think. Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
In regards to chairman, I'd like to get back to the election of offices, if we could. We are in need of a chairman, do I have a nomination or a chairman?
Dan Higgins.
I have a motion for Dan Higgins, do I have?
I'll second.
This motion has been made. Is there further discussion? Vote? The motion's been made, we second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Nobody.
Congratulations. Turn the meeting over to Mr. Higgins.
Since the agenda was prepared by yourself, I, with witness, okay. I would, and I've not had any input into the specifics of the agenda. I would briefly try to break exceptions from along with this evening only, to guide us through the rest of this.
I am a little helping you out.
Yeah, no, that's fair, yeah. Okay. So moving on, it's okay, one of the things in my, oh, yeah, can we, oh, can we talk about it for last meeting? And the board selectmen had it to talk about as well. It's every, it's every few years we are eligible as, as a town to apply for what is known as, to apply for what I know as a community, our community contact best practice grants. And the state, through the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, they make these grants available at the cities and towns. And the state over the last six years or so has, has identified best practices. Has identified best practices in a number of areas. For example, the, some of the first best practices that were applied for, and actually followed by the town, who actually included helping the town become a right to farm, like a right to farm in the community. They also included, I believe in the past, like a stormwater best practice for education and, you know, compliance issues, which we, I have completed and pursued. And also the new, the new open space and recreation thing was also done, completed under like a pie of best practice. And that new, and new open space and recreation thing, which was also done in the process of stuff that at the southeastern region, planning in the development district. That is out, that is actually now the fact that we have that thing done. It's going to help us actually apply for a number of land and park grants when the new grant opens up back the next spring. So we've completed those best practices in the last three to forty years. And now because we've successfully completed those, we have yet to come into a platform. So after review, and there's a line, you look, I think, probably a dozen pages of best practices. They range from educational to regionalization to, I call it health. They include environmental best practices. There are financial best practices, and then there are economic development best practices as well. So in the, at the end of August, in the beginning of September, the board of selectmen, they identified and selected their best practices for this new grant round. Number one, it involves our finances. And the board of selectmen identified the financial forecasting best practice. Also, we understand where our fiscal position is, and so our residents and our income and everyone who we work with and interact with understands our fiscal position, where we are heading financially as a town. That's important when we talk about our government, it's important when we talk about our staffing, what our cost, what our vacation cost out and so forth. Really, no way exactly where we've been, where we have, where we're going. On the second best practice that the board of selectmen identified, just creating an economic development plan for the town. That's really what, oh, you know, like especially with revitalizing and reorganizing this group, did what, did what the board of selectmen, I had really hoped and envisioned that a new focus for this group as well. Getting a lot of the feedback earlier this evening, that last meeting, I understand that, you know, a lot of the challenges from the fire group was that it really didn't have a focus and it wasn't all like an inclusive, ground up type of input. Oh, really, oh, really, the actions of the committee and the focus forward. Oh, uh, really, uh, really, the actions of the committee, um, and the focus forward, uh, you know, and it's all hope. Through the economic development plan, uh, through the work, uh, that also we're trying to do. Now I'm trying to do in the town, uh, you know, so hopefully through a future zoning analysis, uh, those. Oh, and hopefully these are the type of things that will really give. Uh, our group in this group, uh, focus and have the. Uh, and have the opportunity to really lead, um, and provide a lot of them putting guidance on it as we go forward. Um, uh, so that, I mean, I think. Uh, uh, you know, like, really, even what we've heard. Uh, at the last meeting and even how you can make it go seriously, because there's nothing worse. I can all much have done in the following years, I've done in my own community. Uh, but, uh, when you go at seven o'clock for a meeting, uh, uh, that hasn't a focus. Uh, and after an hour and a half, you go home and you wonder. Uh, what was that all about? Why are we even doing it? What am I even doing here? So, um, I think, uh.
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, but so the, uh, so through. Uh, maybe through the community contract program, the opportunity to, uh, apply for and seek help. Uh, crafting an economic development plan, uh, uh, and combining that with the market window and finally. Uh, you know, and, and helping to shape all of those efforts. Uh, can also hopefully at some point, because we know, uh, that the grant we applied for, uh, you know, June. Uh, it wasn't actually successful, like the chance to really refocus and have the committee, uh, you know, uh, how can we focus our efforts? Uh, 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 on that zoning analysis, so, uh, yeah, they're talking about what types of things we want. Uh, on one thirty, how to make the zoning and branding, uh, and everything else we're doing is a kind of really, really. Uh, can sync up with each other, like zoning is really, like, in my opinion. How we talk, oh, you know, how we talked about sewer investments, uh, and sewer expansion investments that. Uh, are quite, quite extensive, uh, you know, arguably, one of the only ways to do that. Uh, you know, is if we, uh, uh, cause if we have fossils, uh, in town. Uh, that will help. Uh, that will help actually be able to shoulder the benefits, uh, you know, and the cost of really bringing that expansion to life because we can't. Uh, uh, assuming it's actually really responsible to assume, uh, you know, that all the benefits. Uh, uh, and all the costs, uh, uh, of any future sewer expansion that can be absorbed by residents' loan. Cause that's just not, uh, able to happen, it's not even be possible. So, uh, that's really where we are, um, I had, uh, yeah, uh. Uh, since the board of selection, uh, have a, um, have identified that by our, and the help. Of the, uh, of the, the development industrial, uh, uh, commission for help. Uh, I have had a conversation with CIRP, uh, that they mentioned, uh, they did help us with, uh, yeah, open space recreation thing. I'm in, I'm in, I'm in terms of providing a lot of backup and technical assistance, uh, and this is something they do, they engage with. Uh, and it's a service and a guy who they, uh, to the community that, uh, they represent. Uh, and thankfully, we're, uh, we are one of, uh, the communities, so, um.
Can this contrast and maybe the representative of people who worked the last meeting?
Oh, no.
So, I mean, you spent, you mentioned planning only forty Bs, are there other committees in town? So maybe if you or, um, could just lay out a little bit more clearly, uh, you see. This committee's role.
Yeah.
As opposed to not making it sound like, it sounds rather all encompassing and it's not, if there, all those other committees are still functioning and important. Definitely roles, so it's maybe how you see us interconnecting with them, so it's not so clear to both them and everybody else.
That's extremely, extremely important and one, uh, you know, it's also why you have to be, uh, yeah, that the other, that the other thing in the meeting there was. Uh, uh, some informal conversation about, uh, you know, uh, you're having a representative with the planning board. Uh, you're having in shrine, uh, just part of the organizations that can be going forward. Uh, you know, that, uh, that there will always be a planning board seat on the commission. Uh, uh, is that mine, uh, and the engagement in order to go back and forth on that. Uh, it's extremely, uh, it's extremely helpful, it's healthy. Uh, uh, to make sure everyone is on the same page, but, uh, how I also view it. Uh, uh, you know, and I'm, uh, you know, and I don't. Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, man, I don't mean to be anyway a fresh gear, but, uh, a lot of these work. Uh, arguably, in terms of, in terms of our current zoning board enough plan and what they are trying to force in. Uh, you know, the bylaws now that we have on the books, uh, you know, like in working with developers. Uh, the applicant taking almost to work for them to go through those processes that they do. Uh, one of the differences and the difference. On how we would think about going forward, uh, uh, you know, like it's like a little more. Uh, hope and vision, if you will, as well in terms of trying to. Uh, you're, uh, you're getting with the planning board, where they're going forward, where, uh, we might wanna go. Uh, you know, and how, and how we really go forward and measure that, uh, at the same time with the planning board. Um. So I think there's a lot of, uh, intertwining back and forth. Uh, like one of the things, I mean, just as an example, uh, uh, four years ago in my community, we. Uh, I can, I was the chairman of it, uh, but, uh, uh, but we'd let them have to do for forty years. Uh, down downtown area. Uh, and we, uh, uh, yeah, I was younger, so I. Uh, you know, I had, I, like, I had died really younger years, but I also grew up, uh, in the town, I understood its history and. Uh, and what really made and contributed to the sound of the town, uh, 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 you know, the outset however, uh, I invited it. Then. A thirty-five year chairman of the zoning board, which had a lot of hope and a lot of influence in town, we invited him. Uh, we invited him in to be part of the conversation because we knew, uh, in order what we would try to sell. Oh, and advocate for going forward, if we didn't, uh, create. An inclusive environment that had buying from everybody from the ground up. Uh, 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 yeah, like, uh, we would be, would be trying to really present something. Uh, like on behalf of everyone that would affect a lot of people, uh, so like we, uh, I, we invited them, this is, and we invited the zoning. And the planning boards, and they actually, the planning board, uh, actually had a representative as well, so the. So with the hope is as we do this, we're engaging. And involving a lot of key stakeholders from the outside. Uh, and from the very ground up, so we can go support that, we, uh, and we don't have to go forward.
One of the things that I mentioned in the last meeting. Is that once we identify everyone. And I'm not really sure who was involved in the recruitment of bringing the marijuana businesses to diet. But there was obviously some individuals, I know. Mr. Pacheco, Ken, was involved in some of the reaching out to businesses that might be interested in coming to the town. Um, and that has. Done very well so far. Uh, once we identified through the zoning analysis. What areas would be ideal, or the specific types of businesses. Could this body put together presentations and go out and try to recruit businesses? Example, the waterfront area. What type of development would be good? Along Pleasant Street or, uh, Dyton Rock Park or along. Other areas where there is wetlands. Once that is identified, once we work the planning board, the planning board determine. What is feasible? Could we take it the next step and go out and try to recruit either developers or businesses to come in? Like I know what, what Wayang did. And I guess their tremendous project will come down along their waterfront. Cause they, without, they develop the deep pockets that wants to develop one. I'm sure it's the ocean or, you know, the river down there. You know. One area that during the campaign. That some of the people on Route forty-four mentioned, they'd like to revisit. That, I guess, uh, commercial zone, I guess, got defeated at time meeting.
We just like threw that on the planning board not long ago.
June twenty twenty? June twenty twenty?
Something like that, yes, and what we tried to do is it was only from the road to the back. Uh. To the back of the property, so many feet were allocated to, towards that and any business that comes in. We can't, we shouldn't do three hundred feet because that's just not enough. You know, if a building is a hundred feet deep, you need parking in a hundred feet. You know, there, there's, just the three hundred feet was not enough, but I think, uh, we increased that either the three hundred feet. From one fifty, it was something like that, but that's already done, I think we did that already. Uh.
Is there room for development there?
I'm sorry?
Is there room for development there?
We rezoned quite a few areas, but it was some, I, I don't remember right now what, what it was. But I'm sure we can, we can get the, we Dr. Perez, she will, she will give us all of that.
Does the planning board get into. Envisioning what the economic zone would entail, whether it be retail, strip malls. Whether it be gas stations and.
There is so much, there's, there's so much wetland in those areas there that. It's, it's, it's all limited, that's what the problem is.
So the opportunity is really on the. The Chuston Street side.
Yes.
Only you read the backs up right there, really, yeah.
It's very, very, very good, uh, area that we can work with, that's, that's the issue there. And then, of course, no big, you know, one, this is forty-four, you know, just a two lane highway.
Now, if sewer came down, would that change the law?
I'm sorry?
If sewerage came down that road and, and to that area, would that change the law?
Most businesses. Unless it's like restaurants or things like that, they, they're the ones that really require storage.
Restaurants.
For some restaurants and things like that, I, if we're talking. I think a lot of businesses or something like that, you know, how much do they need? So a set of systems would do enough of something like that. Uh, I think the sewerage would be most helpful in areas of wetlands. Areas that, uh, people are not. You know, I have any problems with, with the set of systems and stuff like that. Um, that's, that's the, right.
But in general, like when I was talking about how, taking an example of the, um. The, uh, the commission, the committee that worked with our committee. Does that make sense in terms of, like, where your priority is, where our priority is, that we'll work together? Does that, what do you see? Issues we can, I just wanted, I mean, he was laying out a vision about all groups, working, I was trying to work together, and so I just wanted to take a perspective on that.
I, I can, I can say from my understanding of the members of the planning board that. We have a really. Very, very good board, and I think no matter which ones. We talk about, everybody's got an open mind, they're going to, to work with whoever. Uh, because that's just the kind of people that are there, you know, I, I really do that. And, and, and feel that, that a hundred percent, that everyone there will, will do their best to work. As long as we don't start, and that's what makes me nervous is that we have a developer that comes in and he tells the industrial development commission, okay. I, 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 I went, I did this and I did that, but yeah, no, they did it because the planning board was not know.
So, yeah, and that's ex- extremely, extremely, I can, I can point, because. Uh, yeah, the last thing in my mind that we want to do, uh, uh, is also have the town really practice a project. Uh, uh, one way or another, oh, you know, I mean, in terms of, uh, one of the things in, oh, yeah, like. Oh, like I talked to like the whole house already, uh, can try to envision, uh, how we can really expand, like, and make it better. Uh, one of the things that like we had actually, two hundred meetings so far, uh, like, uh, can they. With, with an internal staff group with what, uh, I can call it, uh, like a, um, uh, like a, um. Sorry, a permitting, like a permitting review working group, uh, like, it's like an internal, it's an internal town board working group. Uh, I've made up, uh, I can myself, the planning zoning board office manager, uh, the building commissioner. The conservation agent, and the health agent, so as we have projects. That are in the pipeline, uh, 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 you know, in one way, I could project at this point mainly the planning board. But in a few weeks, it may go to stormwater, uh, like it may go to water house for. Uh, sweatbox, stormwater permit, uh, yeah, how can we. Internally, on behalf of the board of the committee to serve, uh, how, how can we anticipate? Oh, yeah, like all, all, all these type of things where they are. And how they're gonna go forward, and one of them, uh, like, I, I can actually just, going back to the one next example. Uh, a few weeks ago, in, uh, in the meeting, we got, we got updates from the building commissioner. Uh, about, like, about the fact that, uh, what, uh, one connection they, uh, at that point in time, and they're. On their construction, they, oh, you know, they had, oh, you know, they had all the pipes, had all the electric. Oh, like, oh, and all the conduits finished, uh, so we got the word from the building commission that they were ready to start closing up. Uh, uh, cleaning up the ground while finishing up, uh, all the interior, so at that point, on behalf of the other, we. Uh, uh, started to push it out, uh, and understood that, well, he is a construction guy, uh, and. And he is focusing on the building, actually, so he has one more requirement to go under the water house, uh, can seek to reach a sales permit. Uh, so helping him anticipate that, we went to him, uh, can have a site visit with him. Oh, and reminded him, started the process with, with him, oh, you know, like, on that permit, so we, uh, so there wasn't an issue with. Uh, him, he wraps up the building, oh, you know, he gets all the site work done, and then. He's ready to open, and he finds, oh, jeez, I have to go to water house, and we remind him. Uh, actually well in advance to help him in his planning, uh, and that whole process led to, uh, uh. Water health meeting on Thursday night where, oh, you know, he had all his ducks in a row, uh, we, uh, we connected him. With the chief of police, uh, who reviewed the, uh, who reviewed his security plan, a lot of comment on that in advance. Uh, so everything was all online, so when he, he went for that, I mean, oh, you, oh, you're like, everyone had the same expectation, everyone knows about us.
I, I, I don't know a hundred percent.
Yep.
But somewhere along the line.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody didn't read the paperwork, because Jim is very accurate, when he, when he does the permitting.
Yep.
He, he gives out a form, this is, this is what you have to do.
Oh, yeah, no, no, and I'm not saying that, Jim was perfect in this, we just. Uh, uh, yeah, we just really stayed with the process, uh, yeah, the contractor was, so. Uh, 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 all us including the contractor, we had the same expectations at the same time. Oh, and it was healthy, and Jim, uh, and Jim was in contact with those folks all the way through.
Okay, still, uh, okay, but, you know, the. If something wasn't.
Mm-hmm.
Done. Or, you know, they couldn't close the walls, they couldn't close this. I, 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 they should have known that way in advance. And, and, and that should have been written on some of the paperwork that was issued to them upfront.
So, yeah, they didn't, oh, yeah, I just want to be clear, so they didn't have any issue closing the walls, but when they closed the walls, Jim. Uh, he gave the water house. Oh, he gave the waterhouse heads up that. Oh, oh, okay, at this point, they're closing up, everything was good, but he gave the board of health that heads up, okay, be ready. Uh oh, they're getting close and you need, so you and the waterhouse need to anticipate. That in the next few weeks, they're gonna come for you, uh because they're gonna be ready. They're gonna be getting ready closer to opening.
Oh, okay.
So was it, so was anticipating that based on Jim seeing. And that everything was happening great, I like anticipating the next part of the process really.
I was like, I'm I'm. I'm, I take a little while, but I like that.
Oh, I do too, yeah. Speaking, I think a few minutes too, so.
Yeah, but.
Mr. Mullin, could you give us a little bit of background about uh. Individual that's going to be presenting next week and so?
Yeah, uh, yeah, so at the next meeting and including the package, uh, it's like a sample scope of work. Uh that he sent over, but uh the two individuals are from Serpents. Uh who are gonna be here. Uh uh, I like it, I like it, Grant King, uh, he is a, uh, he's a grant manager from Serpents. Uh, great, uh, so Grant King from Serpents is a grant manager. And then, uh, Elizabeth Gonzalez, um, who is one of their economic development plans. Uh, can we, I can, when we, uh, uh. When the board is selecting, after they decided on the economic, on the economic development plan, we reached out to Serpents. Uh, who had presented a draft scope. Uh, like of what we can actually seek to try to accomplish, uh, can an economic development plan? Uh, can the economic development plan? Uh, uh, once we apply and if we're awarded, uh, it's all, it's about a. It's about a seventy-five thousand dollar project, like about, sorry, about, oh. About, oh, fifty thousand, I believe, would be covered by the state grant. Um, and then every year, we have the eligibility as a county separate to apply for what is known as a. What are known as district local technical assistance funds that. Uh, Serpents receives, uh, on the on the. Uh, and Serpents makes available, uh, to the communities, uh, in the districts. So, uh, Serpents has. So Serpents has already committed to matching, uh, uh, any state grant. Uh, uh, that we would receive to complete a complete. Uh, economic development plan for the town, so. I included some highlights, I could really what. Could be included in the scope of the plan. Uh, based on our work with Serpents. Uh, you can see there are. Uh, you know, there are four areas that can be broken down. Uh, that, uh, really any feedback you have at this point and also the next meeting would be. Extremely helpful on. Uh, but the data and information and gathering, PBR, um, I actually have a lot of information. From uh the two thousand and four, from two thousand and fourteen master plan that we did, uh, which like in many, many. Which in many ways is still accurate, and it's a living really document. I, yeah, but online, there's a link online, so I can send that out that way, no one. I'll have to download the whole thing, this thing for it. Uh, but the two thousand and fourteen master plan is still very much a living really document. I can, I like to have. It hasn't really updated itself in my opinion yet. Uh, like, I can maybe look, oh, and they will look at the key. Uh, uh, the key sites that were identified in the master plan. Uh, um, and then they will look at the zoning, uh, like a zoning. Uh, they will look at also, this is importantly, if we discuss, uh, like our infrastructure, our water, sewer. Oh, and all, all the utilities. Um, and, um, and then, um, out of the project would involve an online. Oh, you know, like a, uh, an online resource, an editing portion. Uh, like, uh, I can also working with us really to brand. Uh, not community, but we're trying to do in online presence route. Uh, one of the things, uh, that Serpents, um, is, uh, is already, I think that can be a very, very small turn for the committee. Uh, uh, is identifying an online database. Uh, 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 do any vacant or underutilized buildings? Uh, 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 that could be attractive for developers, uh, for town. Again, town projects or anything else that could be online really. Oh, you know, oh, you know, like in terms of really presenting. Uh, all the information in the database, uh, you know, like. Uh, have any vacant and underused light building and probably random town at the same time, so we can sell. Oh, you know, and attract, who are trying to. Oh, in those spaces. Uh, then also, I'm putting that. Uh, would be map videos, uh, that would also include online coverage. I can, hey, I would survey it with the social media presence. Um, I can promotional materials and really and so forth. Uh, also, there would be, uh, the facilitation of workshop and working sessions, so again, we. Oh, you can really make sure as we're going forward. Oh, you know, in China, in our future, that we're doing so with. Uh, uh, yeah, having the members of our community going to where they want to go as well. Um, and then. Oh, you know, all that would turn into recommendations, and the recommendation would be, uh, the actual outline. Uh, 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 based on input. Uh, of my committee, the board selection, the planning would most likely. Uh, uh, can find a way that we could use. So if I don't go down those four sections and. Uh, uh, pretty fourteen here, but anyone. Having, oh, things they see and don't like, or things they like. Uh, because it doesn't really all have, uh, can we make and we're gonna. I have Serpents at our next meeting too, but I want to go to the process process. Yeah.
Let's say, if I just throw this out there, for example.
Mm-hmm.
That nursing home closed. That being, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Would that be considered, let's say someone had one to develop better housing. For example, would that be a possible jet sale for that?
I believe so, and that would be. Can you repeat that question?
In other words, the nursing home that went out of business.
Yes.
And closed, would that be a po- I've always had this, I'm a, I'm a Navy veteran. So I thought, we don't really have veteran housing in Dyke. And I see like a community like some. It's developed, different ideas, different community. So could we take that nursing home, maybe sell it, develop it? For veteran housing, so would it benefit, just as an idea, how would that work?
I honestly don't see why not, but that would be something that.
I mean, I'm not saying.
I think Jen Exa would be the one, as I told you in Washington, obviously. He would be the one to get here.
Isn't that all part of the synergy?
I bet it's so. It's for that. But a lot of times when a business goes out, I don't know if it's applied in our town. When a business goes out, it's after a while, after a certain amount of time. It refers to strictly residential and not a business. And what they have to do is go back and go to zoning board or the planning board and and ask for. Your stated rule.
We got a problem. Big biddies in town. Have they, I don't know.
Not only me, that I'm aware of the say. That I know, but I'm. That means a lot to me, very much on my regard.
Could that be on our reality?
Yes. Yeah, no, I think.
With, in your radar or.
Uh, uh, yeah, so just as we, just as a town. Uh, has launched like a town opening process, uh, planning for the future. Playing for the future, like, playing for the future of our municipal buildings and spaces. Oh, you know, like in C and find leverage. Uh, so we don't, oh, you don't have the same calendar to preview. Or have a need for any additional spaces. One of the things that I understand in twenty twelve, which. Uh, when we sound like what people are spacing, uh, 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 for the new PD. Uh, we didn't have a lot of. Uh, uh, oh, yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have a lot of the technical needs that we took at. I can generally looking at those things. Uh, it, uh, so we can kind of track down what the status is. Uh, you have a nursing home property, uh, two homes that are. Uh, I after the, uh, after the nursing home shut down and. I can see here we go, but the town is not. No, we do not know.
One, one of the issues in this is bringing back sewer. That would be one of the issues that's gonna come up. That what can be done there? Without sewer. It's like. And really a lot, and and the amount of land that that building sits on is not that large. So even if it's bigger. It may not have enough place to build a, a big enough set of systems. To actually. So tho- those are all issues that that come up. And it's going to continue to come up in our town because of the perk test system. You know, some areas, even forty-four, we're not gonna be able to set a system there. Uh, one thirty-eight, we're gonna have a, we're not gonna be able to do that.
We got a problem. Is this board be okay down the road for you to add that in? Uh, do you felt what could go there and what couldn't face? So maybe. Your permitting requirements. They know you can improve and try to get a lot of for it.
Uh, yeah, I got someone with my opinion, this is a, but yes, absolutely. Uh, I can bring you out a list of underutilized vacant buildings, I can have that list. That part of that process, I definitely see us. I can invite the building commissioner in to talk about the building itself. Uh, and the structure and what really could be impactful. Based, uh, I can see water issues and utility issues. I can self-help, so yes.
Do you go with the recent plan? Was there a line item for consulting about?
So, yes, it was a. It was a, oh, it's seventy-one thousand dollars plan. Uh, with pretty fun. So a lot of. I can forget how, how much basically it was built by us with the technical assistance. Uh, the work of the government of Serpents.
Do we own a lot of things that are vacant? This is, this is the town.
So we, we don't, but out of there, this is a threat. Really what we will be looking at are private buildings. That are underutilized or vacant. I can really work for the property owners. Uh, I can engage them if possible, uh, like in some cases, obviously, it's structural difference. Uh, I have a thing on property, but. And then history. I, like, in the health them. And you ask, and there's them to. I'll get, I'll explain what we're doing and see. Uh, how we might be able to work together if those opportunities that they're gonna be. Oh, I don't want to be idle, listen, but the reason they're gonna be. Our examples where that opportunity doesn't. Oh, you know, and that is what it is.
Just put the, the public here and see what they like.
Yes.
Uh, just kind of change something.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I could talk forever, but I won't get on the one second.
But then, what I would like to.
Okay.
Underworld business, um. Any issues that we discussed the last meeting that. Eclivity or.
One thing that I. I just want to reiterate, I think the fact that. You're in, we have the select and representative. Advisory role and also the town minister. Uh, who are we involved with this and then bringing in the other entities. It's very encouraging. To me, you see this, like, I think it'll move forward in a positive manner. You know, just from the experience from the last time, we didn't have the focus, we didn't have the support. And now I feel it's gonna be positive. Let's speak. This is from itself, but I think. If anyone had experience in the past, now, this seems, this is why I was encouraged. When I got the phone call to come to help reorganize. I think it's gonna be a positive move forward, not just for the committee, but. I mean, the commission, but for the people of Dyke, for the townspeople. So I think it would be official.
Why we want in the business? The issue of the. Planning representative. Would it be okay to put it on the agenda for the next meeting? As a review, discuss involvement?
It needs to be.
We would have to go there, but it's not on the agenda.
Yeah. Uh, I could just, I could just make one recommendation, might also be helpful. Uh, I hope that is going to be focused on the. And the desire of the committee. Uh, I can, I can at this point ask the planning board, uh, how they feel about doing that as well. It's one thing that we have, it's one thing that we have Mr. Figurino here. But it's, uh, it's another. Thing, just my opinion, Alex, for the planning board to normally take an active. Role. And understanding that one of the amendments, whether it's Mr. Figurino, who I hope to God he stays. I, I, for a long time, whoever it is, it's gonna be a presence.
Okay, just, just so you guys know, my name is Joe and not Mr. Figurino. So I don't like you. I'm older than us in age. I I I agree with that a hundred percent, I think the planning board should actually go on that. For me, who actually attend the meeting here.
Would you be able to do that? Morning, or is that just?
No, I. You know, let me ask.
I know how two of you.
I'm sorry?
I I know how two of you managed. Timid with. It's practice, come on, no, do it. As long as it was you.
It 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 doesn't really. I mean, what can they say, no? You know, that still doesn't mean that it's not the right thing. You know, so it, well.
Could you work with Mr. Mullin on that?
I'm sorry?
Could you work with Mr. Mullin on that, you're gonna talk to them?
Yes, I will talk to him tomorrow. Cause I I think, uh. What we're envisioning is the fact that beforehand, it was a lot of, you know, a lot of. This, and 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 that's not, that's not good. So, I think in a, and and to a certain extent, my being here. And as we discuss things. We would have to maybe, if I say, you know what, that's part of the planning board. Planning board should say something. You know, I I think we should leave the planning board to do that. You know, and I I don't need to say it in a way that, okay, I'm gonna have to say it, no, that's not the point, the point is. We, I know what we've discussed in the planning board, I know what we've discussed. And a lot of zones and why this, why that, and if I. Give the advice to the board that, you know, we should not interfere in that. I would get.
I, yeah.
Is there any counts on the board business that we want to short term goals? Last meeting, we talked about business recruitment, business liaison, economic development, zoning analysis. Just so we can stay focused as we go forward, short term. Um. What do we want to be of those four primary focused over the next several months? Wait. Cause now when you talk about the regular grant that you need, can put from us and help with it?
So, so yeah, based on the scope, uh, the vast scope that was outlined, I, I am trying to put the framework or something together. Not gonna be seven, uh, like it's really gonna highlight the framework, uh, of what we would seek to do on the economic development plan. Uh, so like if anyone has any dots over next week, uh, feel free to just, uh, like, uh, email. Oh, and weigh in if you want to see one, uh, here we can focus more than the other and we can. Oh yeah, I can make sure that's all included.
When you say area, what, what you means?
Uh, yeah, like in the app. Uh, yeah, like in, like in every cast here, they have to help, and they have a deadline by September. Uh, like it, uh, there, there is a description. Uh. And, uh, you know, like one thing, just my thought, uh, just out of the, uh, out of the gate. Is in, on the data and information gathering process, I, what? Uh, based on what we talked about earlier, I would like to see a little more focus on zoning as well. So we, uh, we include the zoning in different areas in kind of something that's included. Uh, like any information, uh, any information gathering, so we, uh, onto that information. Uh, like as we even try to envision. Because if we don't, just in my view, if we don't understand. How different parts of the community is owned, how can we talk about, uh, the economic development in the areas without, without that context there? Uh, so that's just one thought I have, but again, I'm. Uh, oh yeah, I'm just me, uh, uh, you all have to live here. So, uh, any thoughts about how we can really make this work, I can make it appealing. Oh, you know, like it, I can really reflect the fabric. Uh, you know, well, uh, uh, it's, it's huge.
What does this grant do?
This is, this, they're accepting of applications, the state's accepting applications on a rolling basis. However, I did have a conversation, um, with, with one consultant last week. Um, who warned me that, uh, I'm this. Uh, oh yeah, they said, uh, they allocated this, this three ever two. Two million dollars for this program. Uh, and I just opened it, uh, in mid August, uh, and I heard that they're reaching the end. Uh, so like I do wanna hopefully get something in that. Uh, 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 oh yeah, like that isn't in this much detail, but generally the slides. Oh, what would I do? Uh, uh, yeah, I guess we can get something in the hopes today, if I'm, if I'm.
That we will just be hopeful in the next meeting, correct?
Uh, ideally, yes, if, uh, if the committee's okay with it, but if it's not, we'll be waiting, but.
We just said if. You could send, you know.
Yeah, if anyone has any thoughts on this.
By when? Since we're not gonna drop it, is he?
Yeah. I would say by the be. Ideally, by next month. All in the weeks, um.
So can I just ask, um, I mean, one thing is, yes, we can all present the rules, send you.
Yes.
Um, if no gift, and I hope this is the one that you lost. Like this subcommittee of you two or three, if you were really interested in this, that had time in the next seven days. So like really need to get into this.
Yes, that's perfect.
And send you something so that, and body, and then really have something in a month's time, say, actually, we agree with this, or it's weekend. Or if I know who's not interested in that, that really has that capacity over the next week.
I love that.
So I guess from here to.
That's why I voted chair.
My, my, one, um, yeah, I'm kind of in the next side, cause I work full time. Um, like you were in the days, I had to meet with someone and that kind of stuff. But I don't know, it didn't make sense.
So yeah, I don't like it, uh, it's even, like, it's even something just in my opinion. Who is something that I can draft. Uh, I can draft something and then working with one or two of you. Uh, we can imagine what the contract changes. And where my version is really, uh, uh, yeah, uh, for Google Doc, uh, I can do what, uh.
See, like, two people, three people would be an actual size group, or?
I'd say two, but yeah, whatever, the committee, we have two volunteers. It's a committee of seven, so many to us and four.
Okay, come to us, we got, we have two volunteers, and I can come in, but, but. Well, with that.
I'll retire.
Okay. I, I mean, I am, but my only things are available to you, so that's.
I'll do the best I can.
If. And from one minute to the other, I can, I can be and I cannot, you know. And I'll give you an example, the other day I was on my way to a funeral. I get a call, Joe, I gotta water back and up, and it's all. Yeah, guess what? Okay, I'm going back, so, yeah, I'm limited to what I can. So I, I. Yes.
I will, I'll send you my comments in email.
Okay, or, or maybe.
Do you want anything to come to you?
No, no, so you're just working with Mr. Owen next week. Okay, help them pull things together, so we can send our comments to Mr. Mullin and you for that, yeah.
Okay. I'm a math. Oh yeah, like the money, really, that's a problem.
Right.
But the purpose of the medium on, he helps very much, but for the purpose of the medium on.
Uh, the other thing, just on the short front goals, just to be good, about one connection. So we've got also been some discussions, some committee members about reaching out to, they haven't already talked to the owners of the. Uh, since the ownership change, um, you know, maybe extending, going out visiting them, like. Mister, oh, well, maybe another slightly, I don't know, members across, introducing myself, fucking, that kind of thing. There's some particular time to do that, just.
But I, uh, just came across a friend of mine that is trying to start a farm. Which is very unusual for a young man, which he's like, uh, is there any? Encounters out there going to stay from whatever to help someone do something like that? That's something.
I can't think of anything, you just have to talk my, my Joe, but there is a mass farm bureau.
A visual what?
Oh yeah, there is a city, we see, uh, north. It's not far from the mass farm bureau, uh, the base at a marble, the base at a marble, uh. Yeah, like I'll reach out to them, like I'll reach out to them tomorrow and I'll see. If I, if I can get any resources, do you think of anything more to be added?
I can't forget anything back.
Cause I would love to see the land across from Mr. Hall there, this they go in. That the land that's the sale across the hundred eighties. I love that, no.
No, no, I mean, I, I look at it. I, I have a dream of buying, but I don't have the money to buy it myself. But I always wonder what's going to happen. And I hear bits and pieces about certain individuals in the town who have some influence and some, a lot of money. You know what? My biggest fear is it being a grabaway. Grabaway. Um. Lot of nice animals out there too, so.
No, and, and honestly, this is a great community for farming and, uh. Uh, even though I was a developer and whatever builder. I've bred a secret farm.
Seventy five acres is good, twenty five acres is not good for farm, you know, I mean, for anything, it's way, way back.
But finally, finally, that's a good thing. Water for the animals, you know, that's. It's, uh, but chances are you wouldn't get it, hold on for anything like that.
We have money on that.
I don't know, it's considering the short term, um, well, but we talked a little bit about, um, the process of the. The vision, we have four thinking, and so, um, I know we have a presentation coming up. Some things looked out, but, um, which was a firmly beginning that process.
I was also wondering, mine, um, Mrs. Sands, she got in the room, she says, this is. Could you give to all of us the resources that Aggie could help us with? Whether it be grants or extension services? That we could be, for the people in the town, they probably don't even know. You know, they think that the Aggie school is just a school, but it's a lot harder.
So you're like, just as in, just as an example, just as an example, that, like, like, one of the things we talked about, the fact that you. On the back end, about having an understanding, uh, like of how we could help. Uh, if we have an individual, uh, comes, who comes forward and asks for, oh, you know, like any resources or steps that. Uh, he or she might need to fix that apartment, uh, can you go down that road? Oh yeah, having a resource, uh, on the town website that actually helps actually. Uh, really for, uh, actually further that goal can really be helpful. The fact that, I think I can answer your question. Is a really telling thing of, of what we need to have in place to help those people. Who wanna preserve what we already have in their life. So I'm missing that, although it's a really good point.
See, even farmers, a lot of times. Instead of just selling the land, just knowing that someone is wanting to continue what they were doing. They, they would actually work with that person much more so than just letting the problem grow to whatever, you know. I don't know, cause everybody, you open same money, I, I, it makes a lot of sense, but.
Where would a critical junction with this town? Cause there isn't, a lot of farmers are getting older, there's a lot of land that's available. And I saw the situation, a water situation. Probably Mr. Labrick spoke about it, you know, the life of a selectman, meaning about the water ban. You know, his developer, obviously, he wants the water ban to end. But I go back that once that water ban ends, you're going to see a lot of developers pushing to build more houses.
Well, that's, that's one of the areas that we've talked about, planning, putting stipulation in. So only so many houses can be built per year on any one developer. Now, I think there is something already in there, we have to put some kind of armor on. To make sure that we don't allow, you know, say there's twenty development, the development is gone. And they all go gang comp, guess what? There's no way that the schools or whatever, I mean, right now, houses are selling so fast, it's scary.
Crazy money too.
Big money, I got a friend of mine that just bought a house on the market for fourth ten, it's up to four seventy five. Fourteen, uh, purchasing sales. And people offering more and more and more just to make sure. And some of them are saying, I'll buy it tonight, and I don't even expect it, I don't need it anyway.
So as far as the November presentation, it's going to be a survey presentation. So if everyone could take a moment to review the minutes from our previous meeting and. Take a long, uh, someone would like to review the motion to accept.
And those are the minutes from the last meeting.
Which should be the second, almost available. Uh, it's closed, passes. Um. We don't have a public board, I guess. Um. We got the planning, as we go forward. The planning, you have seven members?
Five.
Five. So if, if one of the other members wanted me to come to a meeting. You know, is.
I'll invite Woody.
What's that?
I'll invite Woody.
He's good.
What, what if, you know? Um. Sure, you know, you put a back for me. I think as time goes on, I'd like to see other groups brought in. You know, one of the groups that's gonna be really, or could be important, was, is open space. You know, I'd like to hear what their goals, their plans are. Um, with some of the land. Are they target, are you in open space?
Yes.
Do they have land that they're tagging?
They haven't, uh, to be honest with you, they haven't been that active. Because they lost some members, so, but they are getting back, up, up to speed. And they're still working with, uh, Mr. Nepal Tom. And I believe most of the work is caught up, Mr. Mullin, if I'm not mistaken, I was talking to. Brett, uh, so like, Dr. Z is the advisory or act committee. And we're meeting, I believe, November eighth. The last meeting was canceled. Uh. I mean, we haven't met, so I don't have a, just from the last time I was there, I don't, that's all I have for you. We haven't met, we. For a while.
Just to get an idea of what we could focus on, what's real and what, you know, is a dream. The other thing with Woody. Is he sits on the sewer commission. And one of the things that I know from my work with the planning, Mr. Mullin knows a great deal about it. Is that there is a lot of effort coming from state, county, from that head, that's ours. About regional development and regional agreements. And that's something, Mr. Mullin is a blast with some that, runs again, cause someone will come in and talk about that.
Yes.
Because one of the things that's happening, I saw a picture online today from the Gazette, that blew my mind. What's going on in Paul River at that MBTA station? They're going like, can you watch this out there? That line is coming and it's coming back. And no offense, people, they're not gonna be willing to follow.
That's good, and then it's bad.
They come on the day.
A lot of them are gonna come to day.
So. One to learn was. The powers that be have plans to preserve, because they knew. And. We need to get on board with it because it's gonna come. If I'm wrong.
That's what happened to Wakefield.
So.
And so, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but when that station was put into Wakefield, Middleborough. Middleborough area, that area took off, correct?
At one oh five? Route one five, yeah, that's true.
So that's.
We don't work.
You can see it's coming.
Thing is, what you need to do. Thing is, what we need to do.
Just stop it.
Kind of, not going to stop, I know that's the fact.
So how do we manage it? How do we make sure it's measured? I think we can, if we start spending out, uh, looking at our zoning, like making sure we're envisioning our zoning, uh, when we're branding at the same time, oh, you know, the communities that we wanna be as we go forward in the future. I mean, I wanna, again, be idealistic, but I mean, I think, yeah, the emphasis really comes on managing, like looking at our zoning, looking all at our infrastructure and, oh, you know, any tools we can take in that way, we're managing off. I mean, it's easy to be done.
Well, I think we talked about moving out, like, well, if, whether or not, if we don't have a, a solid vision and plan, um, then it will just happen through this and will be lost in different directions and.
I think one thing they're trying to integrate into these developments from is open space. Trying to have a little more open space as part of the plan, and some of these, or they're thinking that way, maybe, or something like that. Like where I live, they're trying to have, trying to work out some open space.
Well, that's, I, I think that was done.
Yeah, but I mean.
That, when, when they came for our planning board, we allowed them the, the open space. They didn't have to do the golf course, they had a place to play, which, uh, recreational, recreational, uh, thing, so we worked with them on that. But getting back to that, what can we do in this community as far as the, the, the train coming in from Boston and all of that, what, what? What is, what is the view here as far as that goes, if I'm going a little too fast on that?
Well, there are many different options. Some of it is grabbing as much of the land as we can, uh, that's one way, another is trying to.
Can you go back and through a little bit, sorry, I wasn't, did you say grabbing some, as much land as possible for?
Open space conservation, C, C P C, tremendous resource. And they're willing to work with us because they can hate for land, if it's open space, recreation use, whatever.
If it meets the parameters, then what it is.
And they're looking at it for eight hundred thousand dollars, they're not there.
I don't know the exact, it's public record.
So if, if you have a piece of land that you might have an inkling that someone is trying to get rid of, any of us. Talking to the landowner, reaching out, Tom's right here, how can we make this work? There has to be an application file, attending meetings with the landowner, you know, helping them through the process with C P C. And then it also has to be voted at town meeting, which the money, uh, is already reserved. Was it one percent of?
Yeah, it's simple, technically, it's, everyone, you know, donates into, you know.
Tax revenue.
It's assessed, but it still has to go to town meeting.
But it's, uh, cause it's not really coming out, I mean, it already came out of the tax roll. But they also get money from nature conservancy and other private groups, or even donations if they.
It still has to be looked at by the membership and discussed.
That's an example we may have, a long time landowner who really isn't concerned about the bankroll. Who may want to see the land preserved, you know, I always remember, God bless the son of Johnny Roger. He owned that hundred acres, and he bombed it all his life, and it was his goal, and it always remained a bomb. There's a joke about that, cause I said, you know, Johnny, after you're gone, you're done, and they wanna just sell it. Some people are like Johnny Roger, they want the land to remain farmland or not have a hundred houses on it. So, um.
Oh yeah, when used, open space.
You know, the, the other area that right now is having a funky ride is pilot agreements for solar. You know, solar has less of an impact on neighborhoods and schools, um, and brings in considerable amount of attachment.
Do we really wanna have, by whom?
I don't know.
Solar farms every day.
I mean, it, you know, my view on that is like, I've, I've said all along, you know, I'm one person. I'd like to hear what the community wants, is that something that we can, can work on, finding out what the community wants to do? I understand this committee before did some surveys, should we go back and bring some of that?
Well, I, I can tell you a little bit of what the community wants. Because I've attended three or four meetings, we've issued the, uh, permits for solar farms. And everybody wants it, as long as it's, uh, they're not on their back gap. That's the problem. And now a lot of them are coming in with these battery, uh, trailers and things like that, that's another big issue. And I, I also think about what's gonna happen with the decommissioning. What happens to these batteries when they're no good, where are they going? The other day I had the opportunity to attend the, at Gillex Stadium, a, uh, thing that was done about, uh, robots and all of this stuff, and I asked a question. When these batteries, because they were talking about, oh, these batteries are guaranteed for ten years, but then what happens to them afterwards? We ship them to China, what do they do then? Oh, they bury them in the bottom of the ocean, okay, so now we all die. And what, I mean, it's, 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 it's not fun, I, I am, I'm, I'm having a hard time with this. And, and it comes in, it's the same thing with solar farms.
Joe, do the panels have a light?
I have, I, there's different, different panels, you know, so.
I thought we were gonna try to. I've been correctly.
Right now, right now. Right now, it's, for further discussion, I know the board of selectmen, and it's mainly, oh, actually, they're on the water, some of the battery.
Yes.
So, it's, let's, whatever's telling me, I don't think I'm, didn't make a recommendation on it. And we have to do that, because of our, some concerns. We're gonna revisit it excellency, but those concerns, correctly, if I'm wrong, haven't been addressed, so.
No.
Certainly something to look at, um, unless we have any further business, so, take a motion to adjourn.
Make a move back to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Joseph.
Congratulations.
No, it's fine. It's fine, I can come back in the morning too.